Thank you, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting of the ordinance committee to order at being Tuesday, March 8th, at 6:35 PM. With me, I'm Linda Vacan, Chair of the Committee, and I have with me Counselor Rivera, Counselor at Large, Counselor Jose Maldonado Velez, Vice Chair, and Counselor Cocaine Givner. Counselors Radeen will be joining us on Zoom a little bit later. So we do have on our agenda tonight four listed joint public hearings. However, I was informed just today that Items 1 and 2 were closed at the last meeting. And so it was just in error from planning that they are on our agenda as joint. And planning will be coming in a little bit later. So I see that we have Chief Pratt and Bob Parent on the Zoom. So if we jump ahead out of order and go to 5 and 6.
Is there a motion to take 5 and 6 off the table?
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So Item 5 was filed by Counselor Givner that the City of Holyoke enforce no parking zones and implement warnings and/or small fines for vehicles in violation. This is a danger and in many neighborhoods makes it impossible to see oncoming traffic when turning onto or off side streets. Especially concerning in Ward 4 is the intersection of Hamden Street at O'Connor Ave. Item 6 filed by Counselor Givner that the City of Holyoke adopt a camera speed violation system in order to deter speeding on commuters through streets, especially Beach, Hamden, Dwight, Maple and High Streets. Holyoke has a citywide speed limit of 25 miles an hour. A ticketing system would remove this burden from our police department in some of the busiest areas while creating revenue for our city. It would also greatly reduce speeding and the running of traffic lights by default, increasing resident safety and life quality in all of our neighborhoods. Now, I understand Chief Pratt is here and I see that Attorney Dagnin is here, and perhaps both of them might have some information to provide to us in this regard. So Chief Pratt, I'd like to give you the floor if you're willing.
Absolutely. Can you hear me?
Yes. Thanks for coming in on the Zoom to our meeting tonight.
No problem. So as far as the first order, if I'm taking them in the right order about the intersections, there is an ordinance for that. It is enforceable. I believe we wrote a ticket today at that location because I had some people checking that out when I saw the order. There is signs posted there, and I think I understand what the counselor's talking about if I'm understanding it right. As you pull up to an intersection like that, to try to pull out of cars that are parked close to the corner, you can't see the oncoming traffic, and that's exactly what it's meant to enforce. So I would propose that, I don't think we need to do much other than enforce, give us some, I mean, we can look around, you know, put it on our priority list to look around at other locations, but if you had specific locations in mind, I can get that to our, you know, to our cars and to our traffic people when they're out there, and they can make some, you know, they can write some violations. And I think that would take care of the problem.
So.
As far as, oh, go ahead.
If I could just ask, so from your point of view, if counselors have certain areas that they're hearing from constituents as being problematic, would you recommend that we just communicate directly to you and your people in the department, the trouble spots, sort of on an ongoing basis rather than orders each time? I mean, will that be an effective way to?
100%. Yeah, if you want, you can send me an email. I can get that to the people. We can start enforcing those locations. What happens a lot of times with those locations is it, you know, it happens and then, you know, we do some ticketing and then it'll stop for a while and if it starts back up, letting us know, we can get back there. And then we can kind of help by making part of that, as part of our guys when they're out on traffic or even the area of cars getting, look at those locations and, you know, put some tickets on the cars there, and that usually will clear up those areas pretty quickly.
I just have a question, Madam Chair.
Counselor Givner?
I just want to make sure people aren't getting like crazy fines, you know? So I'm just curious what kind of fines.
The fine is $25.
Okay. Is there a warning before that or no? Is there a warning ahead of the fine?
Officer discretion on that. I mean, clearly if somebody was right there and, you know, you were able to talk to them by all means, you could write them a warning. I think, you know, I would probably, there's always discretion. An officer can always exercise discretion to give a warning. These are from the city ordinance violation book. It's a $25 fine. They can do warnings. I think, I think this is what you said, if somebody was there, we don't necessarily have to write the ticket, we could just explain to them what's going on, and if they just moved the car, we'd be fine.
All right. Thank you.
Any other, Counselor Rivera?
Just to be clear, there wouldn't be a traffic violation, right? That ticket?
No, it's a city ordinance violation.
All right. Just to make sure. So it doesn't hurt nobody's license?
Oh.
No.
So if we put out the word, we could also let people know that more areas are being enforced and they should pay attention and not park in these zones.
There you go.
Yeah.
There you go. Okay. Thank you. I'm not seeing any other questions on that particular order. Thanks, Chief.
Right. The second one, the cameras that would, you know, enforce speeding. I know that the governor was trying to get one for like red lights. I know there was a bill, I want to say it was back in like May or June. I'm not, to be 100% honest, I don't know where we're at with that, but that was more for like red light violations or people that go through the light. There's some, you know, pros and cons. I think it would be certainly a pro for us, like you talked about. I think the only thing I would say is any orders that we do file or anything we file for the police department, it can never be based on revenue. I know that part of the order mentioned that, oh, this would be increased revenue, but we're not allowed to, that's never our goal, I should say. Our goal would be more for accident reduction, speed reduction, things like that. And that's not saying there wouldn't be revenue, it's just not what would drive the police department. Police department's not allowed to do that.
Okay. So then, Madam.
Counselor Givner?
So then my only question would be, do you, Chief Pratt, think we have a speeding problem in Holyoke? At our 25 mile per hour speed limit?
I think, yeah, it depends on, I would say certainly there's definitely times when people are speeding, yes. Is it an always constant problem? No. I think when we get complaints of speeding, as I've discussed with some of the counselors and when I have a chance, any of the counselors, that what we try to do is look at those through our data collection, through the speed trailer signs that we do have, that, you know, the ones you see where they flash the speed. Those collect data for us and allow us to see when is the best time to get out there and actually enforce, and then we do that after we collect the data. So it allows us to sort of work smarter, not harder. And when we get those complaints, hey, they're speeding on Main Street all the time, well, it allows us to narrow that time down so that we can use our resources more effectively. I don't want to say, I don't think we have an overall speeding problem all over the city, but we have areas where, yes, people speed 100%.
I wonder, in the high-traffic areas that connect different towns, so Holyoke's in the middle and it's a connector to the highways, so I'm wondering if you see like rush hour issues or certain times of the day in any parts of the city where there are traffic, speeding issues? Because when I notice the speeding, it's usually when I'm driving, and I'm probably driving during rush hour as well. So I'm wondering if that's noticed anywhere else or if it's just the noisy people in my neighborhood who are voicing their opinions about a small problem?
Sometimes it is, and sometimes, you know, we still take those complaints seriously and want to look at that, and that's what the speed trailers do for us. A lot of, sometimes the speed trailers do tell us that perhaps that constituent only saw that one time or two times of speeding. The speed trailer is, you know, indiscriminate, it'll tell us all the speeders. And then we see a pattern, and then we try to address that pattern, which hopefully, after we do our enforcement, will help reduce that speeding. Do I see personally, I know we're in the middle and there are highways, what I see is sometimes a bigger problem is we have a problem going up like 141 to the highway every day, you know? At the end of the day going, you know, the traffic backs up, it's not speeding. So there's those kind of problems as well, and I'm not sure exactly where you're talking about, where you commute from, but whatever it is, we certainly look at.
So what does it take to get these speed trailers to be put in areas? I'm talking specifically about Beach that connects to South Hadley, Hamden, Dwight, and then Maple and High, because those tend to be the two-lane streets through the city that have a lot of traffic and connect to highways and where I tend to notice problems and get the most complaints.
Okay. Well, we can put them up just about anywhere. All it takes is, you know, really just a request, an email. We can put them up, we can monitor them for a week or so, see what the data tells us, and then we can look at it. I think specifically Beeve Street, I mean, just my own experience, and I'm sure many people that travel this would say the same thing, the lights are, you know, they're, people are trying to time those lights, and that's probably part of the problem. Maybe something can be done there where, you know, if the lights weren't all in sync. I don't, you know, I'm not an engineer, so I don't want to mess with how that all works, but I think that's part of the problem is that people are trying, attempting to get through all the green lights all at once so they can get from the top of Beeve Street all the way down to the bridge without having to stop for a light.
They can get homes through our community.
Well, you know, I would say that's true of any, I mean, anyone that lives in Holyoke knows how that's how those lights work, so.
They may be getting home in.
You know, some people go down Beeve Street and then turn, so, you know, it's not just people cutting through. I think it's our own people too that have the knowledge of how those light systems work.
And if I may, I just want to throw into the mix, I'm already getting calls about racing now that the weather's getting better over behind the old Pier 1 area.
Oh.
The standard areas, Babola Road, Lower Westfield, behind the mall at night when round, is it Round 1 closes? They go flying down behind the mall.
25 mile per hour speed limit, people.
So I'll just give you the early warning on that. I'm already getting those communications.
Awesome. Thank you, Chief Pratt.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Not seeing any hands.
I will check, see on those speeds, like you're talking about for speed, not for red lights. I think what the governor was proposing was for people going through red lights, which is similar, but actual speed, speeding violations, I'm not sure that that's actually passed, that we could actually do that.
Okay. Counselor, plug.
Maybe one of the lawyers, but no more.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Chair. That's what I was going to say was I don't think that setting up the cameras is legal. I wanted to thank the chief for coming out, and I wanted to recommend to all my colleagues to meet with him if you haven't already. He was gracious enough to let me talk to him. It turned into like a three-hour conversation, and we talked about all sorts of stuff. So thanks a lot, chief. And I really want to thank him too for saying that policing isn't a source of revenue. I know a thing or two about it because that's what I do for the military is domestic ops, and policing isn't a source of revenue. Policing is public safety, and it really should dictate what orders we file and what rules and regulations we come up with. And I know the chief does that too. Whenever we're determining what the police is supposed to do, it's a public safety utility. I don't know what the committee's planning on doing with the cameras. I think it comes from a good place, the speeding cameras, obviously. Maybe there's an issue in certain areas. If it goes to full council, I wouldn't be able to support it though. So I just want to throw that out there. Thanks.
Thank you. I see Attorney Bissonette has his hand up. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair and the members. Right now, the chief is correct, there is no legal basis for any municipalities to be able to establish speeding cameras or red light cameras for that matter. The governor is trying to pursue these by creating local options, but right now, I would suggest if you're supportive of such things, perhaps a recommendation to the members of the great general court, Mr. Velas and Ms. Duffy, suggesting they support it. But right now, you could not enact it, and I know this because we tried, we're told we couldn't do it over in Chigaby. So that law remains unenacted, and the purpose, I believe, chief, was to try to avoid some accidents, high-speed accidents where people were running red lights. I think that was the basis that I heard, but the R-word also neared its ugly head in that discussion for revenue is what, that may be a reason it never got passed. Thank you, Madam Chair.
That's correct.
Thank you, Attorney Bissonette, and thank you, chief. I'm not seeing any other questions at the moment. I think.
I just have one more comment.
Oh. Counselor Givner?
Thank you. I just want to make it clear that speeding is a public safety issue. I think we all know that, and running red lights and stop signs is obviously a public safety issue. So regardless of whether or not it creates revenue, I've said time and again that even a warning is helpful in helping people realize that we are enforcing our laws in Holyoke, and we want to make sure that we have safe streets and we can walk our dogs and kids can cross the street at crosswalks without worrying about someone running a red light. So whatever methods we can figure out to enforce the 25 mile per hour speed limit, which is posted everywhere in the city, with the exception of the four little corners where there's a 35 mile per hour speed limit or a 45, it would be greatly appreciated, I'm sure, by all the residents of the city, especially in those areas that are highly populated. So thanks.
Thank you. Not seeing any further questions. Thank you, chief, for coming into our meeting and providing us with information. So I would entertain a motion relative to Item 5. Counselor Givner, do you feel that your order has been complied with at this time?
Unfortunately, yes.
Okay. So I'll take that as a motion. And is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
So Item 5 is complied with, and on Item 6, I think we're kind of in the same place, but I'll defer to the maker.
Yeah. It's the same, really.
So.
Well, Item 5 is, if it's being enforced, it's definitely complied with. Item 6, if it's illegal to install cameras, it kind of nixes out the whole order, so.
But.
But I think we need to look at other ways to deal with it, and Chief Pratt mentioned that if we send him emails about, you know, different ways to do things or requests that the trailers be put in certain areas, that we can start to tackle this problem, so.
Yes, and there is a list of streets for which the speed trailers have been requested. And so typically what we see is it gets added to the list kind of with like the trees.
Okay, good.
And then it gets moved, it gets rotated throughout the city.
No, I think that's great. That's a great solution.
All right. So is your motion that this order is complied with?
Yes, ma'am.
They're all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that passes 4 to 0 that these orders are complied with. Thank you very much. So.
Thank you.
I'm not, I'd say we go for, I don't, do we see planning board people yet? Okay. So can we go out of order and take up 7 through?
Can we do 7 and 9 as a package?
Well, what I'd like to do is take up all of the.
15?
Oh, 7 to 11.
Right, because we already have the summary from Mr. Parent.
Yeah.
Yes, and he's with us, and so he will combine his things, I believe.
We'll take 7 to 15?
Mm-hmm. So I'd like to entertain a motion to suspend rules and take up Items 7 through 15 as a package.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So I'll do a quick reading. Welcome, Bob. Item 7 filed by Counselor Rivera that a three-way stop sign at the corner of Moser and Center be established. Item 8 filed by Vacan that the engineer recommend and implement safety improvements on Westfield Road at the curve near 292. Item 9 filed by Counselor Rivera that Holyoke establish a three-way stop sign at the corner of Moser and North Bridge Streets. Item 10 filed by Counselor Rivera establish a four-way stop at the corners of Race and Appleton. Item 11 that DPW, filed by Counselor Puello, that DPW install appropriate signage and convert the intersection of Chestnut and Franklin into a three-way stop. Item 12 filed by Counselor Anderson Burgos that a pedestrian crosswalk be placed where Portland Street meets Beach Street. Item 13 referred from public safety that the city engineer review and determine if a four-way stop can be placed at Fairfield in Nanatac. Item 14 filed by Counselor McGee that a no truck or tractor trailer local traffic allowed sign at the bottom of Michelle Lane be installed to replace a no exit sign. And Item 15 filed by Counselor Puello that a no turn on red sign be installed taking effect when northbound on Resnick Boulevard and merging onto Pine Street. So welcome, Bob. We've moved you up on the roster. You're usually, you're here all night and then you're last.
It could still happen tonight. Allah for certainly if the planning board shows up, I will, you know, defer to you at that point if you'd like to take them back up again at that point.
All right. Well, I have confirmed with my committee that they have read your summary previous to tonight.
So I will, if you wouldn't mind, I can talk about the three-way, four-way stop orders sort of kind of all together.
Sure.
Given that some of the counselors are relatively new to the council, I, under Item number 9, I summarized what criteria that we are supposed to enforce, the state and federal traffic criteria. Because we receive funding through MASTIOT, we are supposed to comply with something known as the Federal Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, and then the state of Massachusetts has its own amendments to the MUTCD. What the MUTCD says relative to multi-way stop signs, which would be either a three-way stop sign on a one-way street or a four-way stop sign on a two-way street, would, there's a number of criteria that are supposed to be satisfied. And really, the most important one is demonstration, demonstrated history of there being an unsafe condition, because that's what stop signs are all about. Stop signs aren't there for speed control, they're there to take something that might be a potential unsafe condition and create a safer intersection by placing stop signs. So really, one of the key criteria that is looked at is the crash history. Is one of the key criteria. Then the traffic volume, because if you have a very lightly traveled roadway, you know, you get five cars that drive down it during the daytime, you know, putting in a four-way stop may not make any sense, so they have some minimum criteria regarding the vehicle volumes. So across the board, with the exception of Item number 7, because I thought I had all the police reports in hand when I was drafting this this weekend, and I realized I did not actually request from Officer Porter at the police department, the accident reports from Moser and Center Streets. I will ask that when we're done here that you table that until I can get the accident history of information and provide a more informed recommendation.
Okay. Thanks.
So looking at the variety of intersections that had orders filed, the first skipping over Item number 7 is Item number 9, which is Moser and North Bridge Street. I did obtain the accident history for Moser and North Bridge Street, and there have been accidents there without a doubt. There were two accidents in 2017, there was one in 2018, one in 2019, one in 2021, and they were all the type of accidents that a stop sign might be beneficial for. At another intersection, you'll see I commented about there was basically an accident caused because somebody drove too close to a parked vehicle. Stop sign wouldn't make any difference relative to that accident, but if you have people that are failing to stop or driving so fast through the intersection that somebody that pulls, has stopped at a stop sign and pulls into the intersection gets hit because there's a, you know, there's a very high-speed vehicle coming towards them, that might be a reason for putting in a four-way stop. However, going back to the MUTCD criteria, and I'll say it's a pretty high bar, you know, having five accidents in a one-year period is, it's a significant number of accidents. We do hit that threshold on occasion, and we'll be talking about one location where we're close to that. I expect we might hit it later this year. Several of these other intersections, we're a long way away from meeting that five accident per year threshold. So for the first order that I'm speaking about, which is Item number 9, I would not recommend that a three-way stop be placed at Moser and Bridge Street, because although there are a small number of accidents, there isn't the history that demonstrates the need for a three-way stop to remedy that problem, at least following the rules that I'm supposed to follow.
Bob, can you pause for a minute? I have a couple of questions here.
Certainly.
Thanks. Counselor Rivera?
Thank you. No, my bad. Thank you, Bob. So the one for number 9, I've kind of filed that with Jenny, and for me, residents asked me to see if I could do that, so that's why I filed that one in a sense. But with regards to the accidents, do we look into the gravity of the accidents, like the severness of the accidents?
I do review the police reports, and it's usually pretty clear from the police department how serious, you know, from the report how serious the accident was. And again, in this case, there was a relatively small number of accidents, whether they were minor accidents or major accidents, it really didn't make a difference. There was a relatively small number of accidents at that location.
So I guess if one, one person a year dies at that location, that would not matter?
I.
I'm not saying that that happens.
Yeah, no, I, yeah.
No, I'm saying in a sense to add a stop sign, my bad. Let me rephrase that.
Right, right.
It wouldn't be, it wouldn't qualify for us to be able to put another stop sign there.
Well, in part, I'll say that putting a four-way stop in doesn't ensure that that doesn't happen. Drivers drive through stop signs all the time, and in particular, when they drive through stop signs, many times that is the case where you have a major accident because a driver at the stop street expects that they can pull forward safely and unbeknownst to them, there might be somebody who fails to stop at the stop sign where they're supposed to, that ends up T-boning them or them being T-boned. So it, the stop sign doesn't make that, that makes, it doesn't guarantee that the number of accidents goes from one to zero.
Right.
It could actually stay the same, or it could increase in some cases.
So just for my, for what I've witnessed in the accidents, not necessarily Moser and North Bridge, like that one is not the one that's technically the hot corner. The hot corner is actually Center and Moser. But from what I've witnessed is usually the stops, the accidents happen because the person coming from the side where there is no stop sign is speeding down the street, and then the person that actually is coming out of the stop sign ends up hitting them from not, you know what I'm saying? The person speeding down, they end up probably not seeing them from the corner of where Jenny Rivera's house is, and that's constantly causing, I mean, you'll see when you have the reports, but, all right, thank you.
And I would say, based on reviewing the accident reports, that at all the intersections of accidents, that does happen, and that, you know, I generally said that it's usually caused by two factors, either somebody failing to stop that has a stop sign, or on the other approach, somebody driving at a very high rate of speed, just as you cited, creating the accident.
I'd like to recognize Jenny Rivera, who's on the Zoom with her hand up, and I also would like to note that we have Counselor Murphy Rambeletti, Counselor Puello, and Counselors Bartley also in the chambers with us tonight. Thank you. You have the floor, Jenny.
Thank you, Chair. So I live at the corner, like Counselor Rivera just said, I live at the corner of Holyoke. Mosher and Center. I've been here forever. So, I've witnessed all the accidents that have happened, I've seen a motorcycle guy go up in the air, he landed, his foot was all messed up. I want to say it was last year, at the corner of Mosher and North Bridge Street, the car actually flipped. So, the problem we're having is, the buildings at 41 and 43 Mosher Street, they have a bunch of dirt bikes, they have four-tracks, they have motorcycles. So, they start at the beginning of Mosher, and they go all the way down to the end of Mosher, and then they turn around, and they come all the way back up speeding. There's kids on the bikes with them, no helmets. There's like constant movement. Like my cameras, I had to adjust them so many times, because this is a busy street, it's like one of the main roads down here in the flats, as well as Center. Then, once the gangs are up and going at Kelly School in the summer, North Bridge Street is just as busy as Center Street. So, you get the people coming from the parks, and they're all speeding, they speed down Center Street, they speed down Mosher Street. But the biggest thing I've seen, and I'm not just doing it because I live here, but there's a lot of kids in this area, and from that, like I said, from that building 41 and 43, you get the four-tracks, the dirt bikes, the motorcycles, and they're just like literally racing up and down Mosher Street. And that's not just during the day, it's at night, it's at 2:00 in the morning, it's at 3:00 in the morning, and it's not just motorcycles, it's cars as well. So, that's why I ask, so maybe that, we could prevent from somebody getting killed, because is it gonna happen? It will happen.
We have a 25 mile per hour speed limit. Thank you. We can't hear you any longer if... She looks, it looks like she's frozen. I'll go to Council Bartley if you-
There you go.
Okay, I can hear you now.
So, that's the problem.
Okay, and it seems to sort of hearken back to the earlier order that we talked about relative to enforcement, too. Yeah. Thank you. I'll recognize Council Bartley.
Thanks, Madam Chair.
If you're all set, I, hang on a second. Are you all set, Council Rivera?
Aye, then, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, just for the chair to Bob. Bob, just two things on what's been said so far. One, because I'm not even sure if I asked you this prior, in prior meetings, but when we, because we can pass an ordinance and put it on, that would be opposite of your recommendation. For example, if we added the extra stop sign. But, in my opinion, that's probably not the best way to go about running the municipality. But I just want you to explain to us the consequences of doing that. So, for example, if you recommended not to install an additional stop sign at a particular intersection, any one of the above, and your recommendation is based upon federal standards, what would the consequence be to the city if the city council and the mayor, who signed off on it, nevertheless installed the stop sign? So, that's my first question, then I'll, then I'll just follow, after you answer that, I'll have a follow-up question. Thank you.
Sure. To be honest, in all likelihood, there would be no consequence. You know, there are, and I'm trying to think of any far more consequential deviations from the MUTCD that might get somebody's attention. Putting a four-way stop at this intersection, even though it doesn't meet the crash criteria, the reality is, it probably won't be problematic from a, sort of a state DOT awareness standpoint. There's no MUTCD police out there that are out there, you know, checking boxes, there's no fines, there's no, you know, there's, there's no enforcement measure, and it's not a terrible thing to do. What I try to do is to try to be consistent, so there was a number of orders of a very similar nature. And what I didn't want to do was to look at one neighborhood differently than another neighborhood, because, you know, you know, because of whatever reason. So, I said, I want to treat all of these exactly the same way, it's really about safety, if the demonstrated safety issues are there, I would make a recommendation. If the demonstrated safety issues weren't there, I wouldn't make a recommendation. Will I lose any sleep if the council decided to, you know, act contrary to the recommendations? I wouldn't, because it's not a terrible decision. It just isn't consistent with what I am supposed to use as a guide.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, and then, and then I might, I might go to the chair to Attorney Bissinette on that same question, as to whether there'd be a liability to the city of Holyoke. Mike, do you have an opinion on that at this point, or is that, is that too tenuous to give an answer at this stage?
It is kind of tenuous, Counselor. I will say this, I know of cases where municipalities have been sued because there was a failure to put up a duly or, excuse me, a duly ordered traffic light or stop sign, I forget which it was, Bob may even be more familiar with it than I am, but I remember the case clearly, it was similar logic to the old Palmer case where the Police Department liability for allowing a drunk driver to get away. So, those kinds of things, we have to be mindful of, but I think the engineer has it exactly right. Doubtful we're gonna have any DOT spies working about to monitor whether there's an appropriate three- or four-way stop sign, and, you know, one could opine that public safety more is always better. So, with that, I think putting more up is gonna result in liability, perhaps not putting up a duly ordered one may cause some problems, if something were to happen at that particular intersection. But that's, you know, that's my thought at the moment. Thank you.
Yeah, just continuing on that, Madam Chair, since I saw the floor.
You have the floor.
I know. So, I, just continuing on that, Mike, that's something I, I may, just through the chair to Mike, I may want to have us follow up with that, and I don't want to necessarily file an order to that effect, but I think that's, that's a liability question that maybe when you have some time, perhaps over the summer, when things a little bit lighter load, I hope, that's, that's a question that I, I think could stand a little research. I'd be, for one, very, very interested with, with if there's any outstanding cases on point, but I just, you know, that's just, I'm not necessarily looking for a comment on that at this point, but I just want you to think about that. Then just through the chair to Mr. Parent. Mr. Parent, Bob, say, you know, I'm more prone to siding with, with the recommendation of the city engineer than not, especially for streets that I'm not intimately familiar with, such as the one that we're discussing. But I would ask you to advise us whether or not speed humps, or possibly, there might be another mitigating factor that might be, you know, these are suggestions by councilors that, that are well-intended, for sure, but are they the best way to get the result they look for? So, for example, would a speed hump on these particular streets, would they be even eligible? And if so, would your opinion be that, that they might be in fact more effective than, than a stop sign at one intersection, that may or may not be adhered to by motorists, but, you know, you'd be hard pressed to avoid a speed hump in the middle of a public way? So, Bob, would you have an opinion on that?
Certainly. I think you have a point, that something, something like a speed hump or a raised crosswalk is really more directly addressing the concern here, which is the high rates of speed. Particularly if there isn't the demonstrated issue with traffic accidents that we're trying to solve with a stop sign. If the issue really is high rates of speed, a speed control measure is probably the more appropriate way to go. It's a lot more expensive than a stop sign, but it, you know, it may be the more appropriate solution.
Yeah, just one last comment, Madam Chair. The, just to your point, well, just follow Bob's point, the city clerk has, and she's done it for me, she has the standards for speed humps, she has the draft petitions that councilors can request, and if a constituent wants to, so the ordinance is very clearly written, and the actual petition that's needed, the city clerk has, has a template that can be passed, passed around. That's a little more legwork, and it's a little harder, but it might be more effective in the long run. And I think, Madam Chair, you made a very good point, that, that a lot of this has to do with enforcement, and, and I think what we heard from the chief is that HPD wants to work with all the neighborhoods, and so, that's something that, you have to, you know, Captain Cruz may have to be reminded, you know, emails could be sent right to him, or anybody else in the Traffic Bureau, but Captain Mararti, so hopefully, hopefully some of this will be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Rivera?
Thank you, Mr. Bartley, for the suggestion with regards to the speed humps. I think that when we filed the orders, the intention was to try to mitigate the issue of the speeding up, up and down Mosher Street. If filing the stop sign orders is not the right way to go, I, again, I thank Mr. Bart, Council Bartley for suggesting the speed humps, right? I guess for me, the expectation would be a suggestion to something else, maybe, and I thank you for the work that's been done so far. I wouldn't want to put the city in a predicament where they could face any lawsuits, that is not my style. I wouldn't want to go against the person that we hired to do the job, which is the city engineer. For me, it's working with the city engineer and trying to figure out how best to mitigate this issue. And if the stop signs were the, were not the best issue, then I apologize for putting that forward. And for me, it's trying to find out what is the best way forward to mitigate the issue, because I've lived in that neighborhood for over 20 years, and I've witnessed people die on those corners, not both of them, on one specific corner, and people literally go through some horrific accidents on those corners. And it's just trying to find a way to mitigate the issue.
There's never any harm in asking questions. Yes.
I was gonna, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Equalling what Mr. Rivera just said, I think we're just trying to find a best solution. And I'm wondering what temporary, those speed humps, I know Michigan Ave had temporary speed humps, and maybe that's something that we can look into, at least for the summer, and see how that works, especially with like the bikes and everything and all that. I mean, I did hear a story of a, of a house owner on Michigan Ave that, as soon as they put up those speed humps, speeding stopped. So, or, they learned very quickly that it was gonna affect them negatively, so I think that's something that we should definitely look at, at least the temporary ones for the summer.
Council Bartley?
Yeah, I, yeah, I hope nobody's, I don't, I didn't take it that way, but I hope nobody thinks I'm being critical of filing an order, because that's certainly not what I was commenting on, so I, so, yeah, so I, I, yeah, so I, I-
There's a lot of details to everything.
You know, I've only been here 11 years, but I would say that, I've said this 50 times here at least, that I always respect councilors' votes and their orders that they file. I'm not necessarily gonna vote for them or agree with them all the time, because that's not what I do, but, but I always respect their vote, and I always respect the orders that they file, and I try very hard to try to understand them, and if I can't support them, I try to find a way, Madam Chair, to maybe get an alternate solution to reach the goal that they seek. So, and then just one last point, if you're gonna get temporary speed humps, and frankly, frankly, that's something that the mayor should consider hiring additional, purchasing additional sets. It would be nice to get an order from the mayor to do that, because when you drive over those, if you're going more than five miles an hour, you're gonna feel it, and, and it screws up the car, and the undercarriage, and a motorcycle, and anything else that's going more than five or 10 miles an hour on those. So, if the mayor is gonna, you know, I know the mayor follows all our meetings, but that would be a financial transfer that I personally would get behind, and those go, I think Mr. Parent would agree with me, I think they're $10,000 a set, but they may be north of that now. But nevertheless, there are, there are seven wards in the city, and to me, to have seven sets of those things would be a fairly reasonable expense. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're all set on that. If you want to continue, Bob, with your report?
Certainly.
Thanks.
And to follow up, just in general terms on the orders, there's shades of gray to everything. You know, there are some items where I'll come back with a very black and white answer. The three-way, four-way stops is, is in the gray. As I said, it's, it wouldn't be a terrible decision, but there may be better ways to approach the problem. To give a better example of where a four-way stop is more appropriate, would be to look at the next order, which is item number 10, and that was an order to install a four-way stop at the corners of Race Street and Appleton Street. If you look at the accident history there, there have been 12 accidents in the past five years, there were three in 2017, one in 2018, two in 2019, two in 2011, and four in 2022. And that's, it's actually kind of an interesting trend there. I don't know if you've read any of the studies that during pandemic times, you would have thought that accident rates would go down. In general, people were driving less, but the people that were driving were actually driving much more carelessly. So, there was actually an increase in accident rates over the past couple of years, as opposed to a decrease in accident rates, and that may be what we're seeing here at four in 2022. We've got a long way to go left in the year, so there's a pretty good chance that we will hit, unfortunately, that five per year threshold at Race and Appleton. A factor contributing to it may also be, as you may know, we put a four-way stop in, in response to a city council order that was filed back in 2018, because of a very high number of accidents, there were eight accidents at Dwight and Race Street in a nine-month period. And that four-way stop seems to be of effect, seems to have been effective. We put it in about a year or so ago, we did a lot of marking and messaging of it in advance, because anytime you change drivers' behavior, and they're used to driving straight through an intersection, and now you tell them they're supposed to stop, there may be a lot of drivers don't, don't realize that. You know, they're used to just being blind to the signs that are on the street and just doing what they normally do. So, we put variable message boards on both sides of the intersection before the stop signs went up, to let people know that we were going to be making a change. We then put the stop signs up using the solar-powered flashing beacon, or flashing stop signs, and kept the, the signs up for a couple of weeks, so people would start to change their behavior, and again, it seems to be effective. Part of the change may be that perhaps now, and that's the good and bad side of some of these changes, is maybe now drivers are expecting a four-way stop at Appleton and Dwight, because they, I mean, Appleton and Race, because they've seen no four-way stop at Race and Dwight. And maybe that's affecting accident rate, I don't really know, but I know that we're likely gonna exceed the five per year, and based on that history, would in fact recommend that we do the same thing at Appleton and Race that we did at, at Race and Dwight.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Council Bartley?
Yeah, just through the chair to Mr. Parent. Yeah, Bob, I think what, what the city did at Dwight and Race was, was very effective. I think we're all aware of what happened with the, the pretty hard accident where a pedestrian was, you know, killed there, so that was, kind of got a lot of press reports. But the, with this current one, would you be able, would you can just advise a committee on whether or not, A, you would install solar stop lights at that stop sign, just similar to what you did on Dwight? And what is the follow-up with that? What's the cost of the solar lights in general? I think, because we, I have an order that I know that you supported at the far end of High Street at Lyman to install solar lights, so I think you supported that, I'm just waiting for a financial transfer to come from the mayor to, so we can vote on that, and get those installed. But, so, so one, Bob, would you, would you think that solar lights would work at Appleton? And B, what are, what are the costs to install those? And B, what are the costs to install those?
Sure, a couple of points. One, definitely they would work. You know, they're a location where they would be effective. There's enough sun exposure that they would work. There are some locations where you get in a very heavily wooded area or shaded areas that you could not put up a solar-powered stop sign. The cost per stop sign is a little bit over $1,000 per stop sign. So they, you know, they're not inexpensive. If we had the resources, we'd put them up at every single stop sign. We don't and no community does. And therefore, we really try to put them where we see the greatest accident history, the greatest need to make certain that people really see a stop sign. Because particularly at nighttime, the flashing stop signs really catch your attention. So it's doable. It does come at a cost. There is a maintenance cost because the solar batteries don't last forever. Typically, you're having to replace them on about a five-year basis. And there's about a $500 cost to replace the batteries. So, you know, it's like anything else, you invest in it, it has an upfront cost and then it has a recurring cost that you need to continue to be aware of.
And Madam Chair, so just to the chair, to Bob, Bob, were those, with funds from the marijuana mitigation? Because I know we're doing stuff with, potentially doing stuff with infrastructure. But perhaps, you know, because in my opinion, that, you know, most of those funds, since we've got the, you know, wards one and two are basically where the zoning is for that industry. Would those, can you talk to the mayor possibly, Bob, about seeing if a financial transfer would be in order from that stabilization account for just that project?
Certainly, I will do that without getting into last night's discussion in any great depth because we did go into great detail last night. Certainly, if we're seeing increased traffic volumes as a result of cannabis facilities and those volumes are going through these intersections, I would clearly see it as something that, you know, use of an impact fee would be legitimate.
Okay. Not seeing any other hands or questions? I think we're set with that.
Moving on to item number 11, same story as other intersections. This is the intersection of Chestnut Street and Franklin Street. This is the location I mentioned when I looked at five years of accident history. There was only one accident. But the accident that did occur was a vehicle taking a right-hand turn from Chestnut Street onto Franklin Street and hit a vehicle, parked vehicle, that may have been parked too close to the intersection. I don't know that for a fact, but hit a parked vehicle as they were maneuvering around that corner. So whether or not there had been a stop sign there or not a stop sign would have made no difference in terms of whether that accident would have occurred. So like some of the other locations, I don't see that as a clear location where a four-way stop would be advisable.
Counselor Puelo has a question on that one.
Thanks, Madam Chair. And through the chair to the city engineer. I guess my question is, how do we determine some of this stuff? So do we like go out and drive through it? Do we go on Google Maps and take a look? How do we, how do we examine this?
Well, again, my step one is take a look at the accident rate. So I reach out to Officer Porter in the police department. I ask her to provide five years of accident history. And I did that in this case. And as I indicated a moment ago, though, she replied back to me that there were no accidents during that five-year period. Are there, are there buildings at the corner that if you're not careful, that you, you know, you move slowly through the intersection, that those buildings could block your line of sight, certainly. But there are corners like that all over Holyoke where buildings are, have been built and as was the practice right up to the property line. And you need to be careful when you're maneuvering through those intersections.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, I don't know. Thanks, thanks to the city engineer for the work that he did on this. I don't know, I just think maybe we can keep looking at it. I don't want to, what do I say here? Don't get rid of it, guys. Don't table it. Pass it anyway. I'm just kidding. I did get a fair amount of complaints about this intersection. And I want to thank former Counselor Yostal Lopez, he kind of started the rush on the emails. And the blind spot is pretty significant at it, so, I don't know. I guess thanks for the recommendation. And I guess I can refile an order that says to come up with a way to figure something out as far as the blind spot? Because I do think it's a big issue. I think maybe if we mitigate parking at the intersection when you make the right-hand turn, maybe that could help a little bit because I think it exacerbates, it makes the problem worse whenever a vehicle parks at the end alongside the building. Because then you have the building and then you have a parked car. So maybe if we can look at something with the parking, maybe that would, that would help. So, thank you. Thanks, Bob.
Counselor Givner?
To your point, this is, looks exactly the same as O'Connor and Hamden. It's just in the other direction. But you pull up to the corner, there's a building, the stop sign as well before the street. So you're pulling up to the street and if there's cars parked there, you can't see anybody coming up the street there. So I think what we're, what we're learning, if we didn't already know, is that we have some enforcement issues and we have some areas that are blind spots in the city. It would be really nice to figure out a way to do this a little more holistically because I think we're tackling individual corners one at a time. And it seems, it seems like a lot of efforts when there's a similar problem, you know, 112 times in different sections of the city. So I don't know what the solution is to that, but I just, it would be nice if we could figure out a way to not have whole meetings about five spots and, you know, maybe do like a citywide study or something. But I don't know if that's asking for, you know, a larger project. But if there was a way to do it, I think it would be really beneficial.
Well, Bob, could you offer any general insights or as part of what we're dealing with, the old buildings under old setbacks and stuff like that, that we have to figure out how to live with?
It, I believe it's a combination of factors. The parked vehicles are clearly a problem. State statute and city ordinance prohibits parking vehicles within 20 feet of an intersection for that specific reason. And yet all around the city, you know, we see vehicles that are parked right up to the intersection, making it very difficult, making it very difficult for drivers to see when they should be able to see. So you take a corner where you have a obstruction that isn't going to go anywhere because it's been there for 100-plus years. And then you add a vehicle to it, it just makes the problem worse.
And if I remember correctly, we have installed signage even though it is a standard ordinance in places where it's been very problematic because people were ignoring that just so that they can see where it is.
We have, and I believe the police department feels, better isn't the right word. They, they're, having a sign there makes it more, more explicit when it comes time to enforce the city ordinance because there's no excuse staring you right in the face is basically the city ordinance. So if a driver was parked there, there's no excuse for saying, we didn't know that. We weren't supposed to park at that location. And we have had some locations that I can't remember on offhand where councillor might file an order to actually increase that setback from the intersection. So, you know, there may be some unique locations where maybe 30 feet is required or 40 feet might be required. But then, like everything else in life, we have the trade-off of parking spaces and, you know, it's very difficult to give up parking spaces. And we get complaints when that happens. But there, yeah, it's, vehicles should be 20 feet back. If they're not, they're in violation of a city ordinance. If we put a sign up, that makes enforcement even more direct. And if that isn't enough, pushing cars even further away from the intersection might be needed.
And we have done a few of those out in Ward Five and they've been effective. And you were very helpful with that, so thank you. Did you want to be recognized, Counselor Puelo?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say again, thank you, Bob, because that sounds like a great solution to this. I don't think common people know that, that you can't park 20 feet from an intersection. Right, so instead of going around, you know, no tickets, you know, we can probably set up some signs. Let people know.
Counselor Jose Maldonado.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, a couple of thoughts that are coming to my mind. I mean, I think one thing is just information and how our citizens just know what's going on in our city. I think that's one problem that we've all known. And I think a lot of us ran on that very issue. So, yeah, thank you for saying that, Bob, because I didn't know of the whole 20-feet situation. But you also mentioned the parking thing, which I, that's immediately what came to mind. Because I live in downtown Holyoke and I know like 20 feet is a lot of space and we're taking up space for parking. So I think the conversation, I know we're having a parking advisory committee at the end of this month, so maybe this is a conversation we can possibly have there. Because this also talks about like, thinking about like winter parking bans. Like where do people park was the best space for that? So, yeah, just thank you for all the information, Bob.
Oh, Counselor Givner?
And I just wanted to ask if it's more or less expensive to do the street painting versus signage? Just because signage, well, takes up airspace and obstructs things. And I'm just wondering if it's cheaper to paint the streets and just, that's more permanent and, I don't know.
It doesn't last.
It doesn't last. It's nicer, though.
It's already wearing off on the speed humps, the crosswalk humps.
So that's my question, yeah. Is it, is it helpful? Do we find it's useful instead of signs?
There are some cases where both exist. For instance, if you look at Dwight Street, the areas that were reconstructed between High Street and Front Street and Heritage Street, you can see that in many places, we actually have signage and striping. So sometimes you really try to reinforce it as much as you can. I believe, you know, Counselor Vacan noted that the lines don't last forever. A line that's painted with plain paint will typically last a year or two and then they'll have to be repainted. We have struggled, if you look across the entire city, we have struggled with line painting over the last couple of years. There are a lot of areas where we need to do a lot of work that we haven't had the resources and the manpower to do so. We did recently, through a state grant, acquire, there's a different type of line striping, what they call thermoplastic. If you ever, you know, walk over the line, you'll see it's not flat. It's a little bit of a bump. It's about an eighth of an inch thick. And those thermoplastic line stripes, lines tend to last much longer. You know, a good five years, maybe, you know, on the outset 10, but at least a good five years. So we will, with time, have the ability to put in some lines that will last a lot longer and not require as much maintenance. The only downside of that is once you put it there, it's hard to unput it there, if you know what I mean. So it's, paint is easy. Paint goes away in a year or two. We can move lines around anywhere we want to. The thermoplastic actually has to be ground off of the pavement to remove it. But, so back to your question, which is better? You know, a street sign goes up pretty quickly. You know, we have to dig safer locations so we don't put a post through a water main or a gas main or something like that. But once we do that, the out-of-pocket cost for a street sign, a no-parking sign, including the post, is probably less than $100.
I like it.
All set? Okay, I think we're all set on these so far.
Okay, and we have one more, and this is a four-way stop sign. And this is item number 13, an order filed by Councillor McGee. Same procedure. I went to the police department, I requested a copy of the accident records for that intersection. This location is right where Fairfield Street transitions from the split street to a single double lane or two-way street, right at Nonotuck Street. And there have been no accidents at that location in the past five years. So really, from a consistency standpoint, I felt it was appropriate to have the same recommendation here as I've had elsewhere.
Thank you. Seeing no questions?
So if you would like, Chair Vacan, I can then go back to, I think it is item number 12, if I'm following correctly. That is not a four-way or three-way street sign item. So for folks that read my write-up here, I'll summarize it. As Councillor Anderson Burgos did indicate, there was a accident, a pedestrian that was hit. Luckily, as far as I understand from the police report, the injuries were minor. There was a driveway, excuse me, a driver that was pulling out of Portland Street onto Beach Street, taking a left-hand turn. And there was a pedestrian, a student, who was attempting to cross Beach Street at that location. And apparently, the driver, the vehicle collided with the walker attempting to cross the street. It's, it's a little bit, I don't want to say strange, but it's unique. And then that car had to come, had to most likely have come to a full stop at the intersection of Portland Street because I don't think anybody would pull out of a side street on Beach Street during the daytime and not stop and look before they pull out. But apparently, the driver stopped, looked to some extent, took a left-hand turn and again collided with the pedestrian. Those are the facts as I understand it. I do want to note, and it really comes down to pedestrian safety. And our recommendation generally would be that we ask people, we recommend people cross streets, particularly a street like Beach Street, which is a very heavily traveled street, high rates of speed, certainly far in excess of the posted speed. I believe the posted speed is 35 miles per hour. The 85th percentile speed, which is the speed that most drivers drive at or below, is about 38, 39 miles per hour. But there are stretches where there are drivers driving 45-plus miles an hour. And there are some periods of time when there are drivers driving much faster than that based on some speed counts or speed measurements that were done this last year down at Ladd Street, L-A-D-D Street, which is between two signalized intersections. So I would expect at this location up in Portland, that driver's speeds would be even higher because there was no intersection for drivers to have to even worry about potentially slowing down and speeding up again. So I think once you come off North Hampton Street and Beach Street, the rates of speed are probably even higher than what were measured at Ladd. So it's a difficult street to cross. There are two locations in which there are increased safety relative to crossing. There's the signalized intersection right at the high school, right at, and I'm blanking out the street, so I'm going to look at my notes right now. Right at Linden Street, it's a fully signalized intersection with pedestrian push buttons. That is about as safe as it can get. And then there is the crosswalk that existed at, it existed at Carter Street that we, this last year, put in curb ramps, so it's ADA accessible, and put in rapid flashing beacons that pedestrians can push before they attempt to cross Beach Street. Again, attempting to try to improve the safety of that location. And really, I would encourage pedestrians to cross those two locations whenever they possibly can, instead of trying to cross at a location, even if there was a crosswalk painted on the street. And the reality is that Portland Street, I don't think if there was a crosswalk painted there and if, even if there were crosswalk signs placed so that a driver could see them on Beach Street, I'm not certain that would have made any difference for a driver taking a left-hand turn out of Portland Street that apparently failed to see the pedestrian in front of them and impacted pedestrians. So recommendation here really is to use the measures that are there because they're far safer than attempting to cross at Portland Street. And I think, you know, you don't want to lull pedestrians into a false sense of security. Once you put lines in the street, pedestrians oftentimes feel like they have the right of way. They should be able to walk into the street and legally, they should. Drivers are supposed to stop, but as we all know, many times they don't. So we don't want to encourage pedestrians to cross at locations that aren't the safest locations that they can, they can cross at.
Thank you. Not seeing any questions? I think we can continue.
So our recommendation is really to leave that as is and again, use what's there now and try, you know, don't, don't potentially make things worse.
Thank you.
Item number 14. Now, item 14, it's sort of, item 14 is.
Hang on for one minute, I'm sorry. I see now a hand from Counselor Anderson Burgos. He didn't have it up before.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, for acknowledging me. And Robert, I want to thank you for all your hard work. I listened to you very closely. And so when I filed this order, And so when I filed this order, I did not notice the the crosswalk between Carter and that extends out to Beach Street. I didn't see that before. And I did notice that there is some, um, there's a traffic officer now when students get out. So I feel much, much more safer um with this setup. I I I I think that it's complied with. And uh, thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam, uh moving on to item number fourteen, I'll put item fourteen in a category of a a frequent topic at ordinance committee meetings, which is truck restrictions. Um, I repeated a bunch of texts that I've put in front of this committee before, explaining again what the MUTCD says relative to truck exclusions. Um, and the the criteria that has hung us up on every one of them that I've um responded to since I've been with the city is the volume of trucks. Um, Mass DOT, who ultimately needs to approve the truck exclusion, both locally at District Two and then in Boston, wants to see a minimum volume of trucks. So one truck going down a roadway once a day uh would oftentimes, although that's extremely problematic sometimes, uh would typically not hit the five to eight percent threshold. That is required for for the state to even consider a truck exclusion. And there's another number of other criteria that you've read through it. I I don't need to go through and repeat them. Um, but what I will say is that, um, that all said, there are a number of streets in the city where there are truck exclusion signs that have been installed. And I would consider them to be more an advisory sign than a regulatory sign. Um, and you know, we're trying to get the message across to to drivers. They're not enforceable. The only way to get a fully enforceable truck restriction is to follow through a very detailed process with Mass DOT that I don't think we have any chance of being able to satisfy here. Uh, but we wouldn't object to the concept of putting up a sign at the end of Michelle and advising truckers that they really shouldn't drive down that street. It would just be the case in the event of a resident seeing a truck, uh, you know, calling up the police department and say, you know, I want you to find that truck because they're in violation of a city ordinance. Um, it would not be enforceable.
Okay, thank you. The maker of the order isn't here, so maybe we'll table it for him to weigh in at a future time if so. Um, I think we just have fifteen and eight left.
Fifteen, uh fifteen is, I guess I'll put in the category of, I actually agree sometimes. No, I'm just kidding. Councilor Cuello had had filed the order relative to a no right turn on red sign at the intersection of Pine Street and Breznik, where where Pine veers off on the right hand side at a at a less than a ninety degree angle. And based on that location, where we do have a very high volume of pedestrians, we have students right there coming in from the high school. We have activities at at the field. We have the senior center a block or two away. Um, it does really appear to be a location where a driver that doesn't want to come to a full stop um might decide to roll through that intersection at a fairly high rate of speed and create a problem for a pedestrian who's trying to cross on Pine Street. And that's really what this criteria number D is intended to to highlight, where you have a lot of potential conflicts between drivers that fail to stop. And in this case, because of the geometry of that intersection, are probably even less likely to stop, because it's not a right angle. They can kind of comfortably just glide right through the intersection if they choose to. That in this case, a right on red seems like a very appropriate measure to increasing pedestrian safety.
Councilor Cuello?
Thank you.
Okay, not seeing any other questions. Um, I think the only one left is eight.
Uh, item number eight. And as you know, uh Chair Vakin, this is an order that you had filed relative to vehicles um leaving Westfield Road um at near house number two ninety two.
Yes.
I drove the road just to put my own eyes on it, try to understand why might vehicles leave the roadway at that location. And and as best I can guess, it's drivers that, one, are either not paying attention and don't see the curve. Um, there's a slope you're going downhill as you're approaching that curve and coming around the curve. And then there's a reverse curve on just ahead of you. So maybe some drivers are looking ahead and not looking in front of them. And then there's activity at Bray Park as well with with, you know, with the the plaza there. Um, so there may just be things that distract drivers more than they should be distracted at that location.
So I was hoping, you know, with the raised crosswalks, that that might impact on that in a favorable way. Um, but right after that, it it happened again. The only thing that I observed, because I drive down there a lot, is you know how the white solid lines run up next to the curb?
Yes.
Right before that house, the solid line stops because there's two driveways. But before it stops, it runs toward the curve. And what occurred to me is some people drive by the lines. I can tell people that drive that way when I'm driving behind them. You know, they're they're following the white line rather than looking ahead. And I'm wondering if they might just be staying on that trajectory. I'm not saying they should, but I'm just wondering if they do. And maybe we could just simply um change that paint. I figured it would be cheap and maybe worth a try. But it was the only other thing.
That that wasn't something that I picked up when I drove through there, but uh because I was looking out, I wasn't looking down at the pavement. But you may be right. It may be that uh people are following that line and then it would be a simpler and certainly less intrusive solution than either putting up the 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 bright yellow Chevron signs, arrow signs, or even going further and putting up a guardrail, which is not something that we'd recommend at that location.
No, no, and I I could definitely see that. Um, but I also do appreciate um you and the folks in DPW getting that speed sign put there. I think that helps a little bit too. So um, that was the only thing I came up with, but thank you for going out and looking. And if that might work, that would be great. Um, and I'd be happy to consider it complied with if I know you'll just take a look at the paint.
Will do.
All right. Thank you so much. Any further questions on any of these orders from anybody? Calling once, twice, three times, done. Thank you, Mr. Perrin. And we got you out here before eight. How's that?
That's great. Better than last one. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Take care.
You too. Okay, now let us see if we can put these in a package and and get them taken care of.
I'm trying to figure out how, when you're following somebody, you can't like signal them to like look up. Like, come on.
Well, it's like I told my husband when he's driving, he said, they were wrong. I said, well, would you rather give them way and be alive or be right and dead? Anyway, um, so on item seven, um, I'd entertain a motion to table, please.
Motion to table item seven.
Is there a sec? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So um, item eight, um, I would make the motion that it's complied with.
Motion that item is complied with.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So let's package nine. Well, I'll check with the, is the committee generally open to accepting the recommendations of the engineer?
Yes.
Okay, so then let us package nine, eleven, thirteen, because they're like items.
So the only one of, I mean, the only one
Or do you want to package more?
No, so I from, I guess, oh, the only one out of all the ones we spoke of that actually sounds like could be passed to a larger council or full council is what, ten?
Ten and fifteen.
So can we just do ten and fifteen and pass those and then
Sure.
do the opposite way?
Sure, go ahead. Make a motion.
Uh, make a motion to uh pass item ten and fifteen, right?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So items ten and fifteen, ten being the four way stop at Race and Appleton, are recommended for approval four zero. And item fifteen, to put a no turn on red sign at northbound on Resnick Boulevard onto Pine, recommended for approval. Four zero. Okay, so then that leaves us with nine, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen.
Make a motion to table item fourteen.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so then the last package of nine, eleven, twelve, thirteen would be to, well, you can say complied with or accept the recommendation of the engineer, um however you
Accept the recommendation, yeah. Of the engineer for nine, eleven, twelve, and thirteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I think I got them all. If anybody sees anything I missed, feel free to circle back.
There was only the one tabled, correct?
We have, um, item seven was tabled and item fourteen. Now, I'm still not seeing planning. Okay.
They late. They gonna miss the boat.
You're you're gonna begin coming over.
Okay.
They're gonna begin? I'm ready for a snack.
I've I've been in touch with Sharon.
So if it's within a minute, we'll just wait. Well, we have, it was so with them, we're doing items three and four, and then we'll just have one and two. Good thing we kept going.
I know.
Should we do the public, should we start a public hearing? Can we do that or no?
Um, we could, but I I hear Jeffrey telling me they're coming now, basically. And I see Aaron vague on. But but feel free to take a two minute break while they're coming in. How's that? I just won't recess it for the public, per se. Right, but so just in the interest of the public, say they're clicking around, they're going back and forth on fifteen. If we recess and they come back to fifteen and we're just empty, it's a little misleading, you know? So not that I think there's a lot of people that are totally watching it, but I'd rather just sort of keep it live. But if they don't come pretty soon, they'll take up one and two. I don't know. I don't know who that is. Maybe it's a staff person. I don't know. I don't see any of the board members though. If anybody's watching on television, we're just waiting for the planning board to come in. Thought they were coming in on Zoom. Are they physically walking over? Too much dead air. Sort of like a sportscaster, you know? Right, gonna keep it. Right. They did. So they won't, I mean, we could have taken it up, but we don't. Well, actually. I just thought they'd be right here when he said, Sharon said they were coming. Jeffrey, do we have an update from planning?
Um, Sharon does know that um you guys are ready for them, so it's, I'm watching Zoom to see them begin to come in. She did say they were about to do their own vote on the buffer a little bit ago.
We can talk about that a little bit when they come in. Well, this isn't a good example um to lessen confusion, but
Like baptism on fire, you know?
Right, but this was unusual. But we'll take up three and four. And I have nothing before me for four. We'll take up after those in committee, because our hearing is still open. And I'll I'll talk a little bit about the process, just to, sure. I heard that part. We we have, we have no thing, um, I've asked, well, I'll talk about it on the on the mic. But we'll just end up continuing it, because we have nothing to act on. I think I'm going to put it to the end of April, because there's no point in putting it to the end of March. Excuse me for a minute. I'll be right back.
Was there a musical last year?
I'll be honest with you, I don't have the process. Like, late nights, six to like nine. Now, at four, it's about sixteen. When my daughter was fresh, and I was like, yo, what are you guys doing back here?
It was a lot of work. People were doing homework. Honestly, people were in the hallway doing homework. And then it was high school. High school things happened, but everybody here, everything.
Definitely of our goodwill. We're on, we're on camera, we're on, we're on television. Because I didn't want to recess.
So I just got an update that they're still double-checking their language for the, the buffer recommendation.
All right, so we're we're, we're gonna move forward and take, and I'd entertain a motion to take up items 1 and 2 and open the public hearing.
Absolutely.
All in favor? Aye. So we're in public hearing on item 1, which is regarding the buffer filed by councilors Murphy Rombaletti and Anderson Burgos, amending the zoning ordinance by deleting other use as listed and inserting the following language in its place: Any pre-existing public or private school providing education in pre-kindergarten, kindergarten, or any grades 1 through 12, or other such legal forms sufficient to resolve any uncertainty over the interpretation of the existing ordinance as compliant with state law. And item 2, filed by me, Linda Vakin, that the current buffer in the marijuana ordinance 200 feet from any other use be reviewed and revised to schools, residents, et cetera, to ensure opportunities for new marijuana businesses and to ensure continued development opportunities for established local business in accordance with our master plan, connect, construct, create. So, um, I already entertained the motion to open the public hearing, so we are now in the public hearing. And I'm wondering if there are any members of the public that are here to speak on the buffer issue. If you can be my double set of eyes. Is there anybody on the Zoom or anywhere? Okay, so...
There is one hand up.
Oh, okay. Hang on, I'm just looking to see who it is. Hello. Hello, I see Jim Belarian on the Zoom, who would like to comment in the public hearing. You recognized?
Yes, can I be heard, Madam Chair?
Yes, you may.
Okay, thank you, and I'm not seeking to make any comments at this point in time. I, I just wanted to be known that I am here, and as the hearing goes on, I may raise my hand again to comment, but as of now, I have no comment, so I'm sorry for interrupting.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so just to summarize, I've been asked a question on the process about these hearings. So generally, there are two boards that hear on a zoning change. The planning board, that is a recommending body to the ordinance committee, who is a recommending committee to the city council. In the past, in an effort to coordinate and be a little bit more user-friendly to the public and the applicants coming in, in particular for zone changes for their property, these public hearings would be held jointly, more for the convenience of the applicant. And also, that it's perhaps a good thing if both bodies are hearing the same information at the same time, although there's no requirement for that. And sometimes logistics don't work out for that to happen. But each body follows its own set of voting rules and recommendations. But in the case of a public hearing, this committee generally will keep the public hearing open to get a recommendation from the planning board, because there are timing issues. And so once a hearing is closed, then there's timing issues relative to either deciding or not deciding. So this is a situation where the planning board was meeting separately from the ordinance committee at a point in time in the past. And I think that is a little bit what might have contributed to some of the confusion with the language. But be that as it may. So now, our job is to, on the one hand, clean it up, and on the other hand, as time passes and we gain experience with ordinances, sometimes we learn that there are unintended consequences of those ordinances. So if a matter is properly advertised, it may have begun out of an intention to correct a thing, which on its face seems a very simple thing. On the other hand, if there are other issues that have developed over time that relate to that issue, in fairness to the people affected by it, they have the right to bring those issues up. And so we've been hearing from Mr. Abin and some of his tenants through him, in particular on this. I don't think they're alone, but certainly he has been the spokesperson in this regard. So throughout the public hearings that we've had so far, we have had different suggestions made. So within just this general discussion, we've had the suggestion made from one of the people that petitioned that they would like the buffers to be extended to more uses, such as residential, which is already not allowed in a building with the marijuana activity. So there have been suggestions made to return the buffer to 500 feet, which is what it was originally, before it was reduced to 200. There's been the suggestion made that there be zero buffer for all uses. And there has been the suggestion made that, and I don't know that I have that language immediately in front of me, but that three or four or five other uses be added along with the schools to be included in the buffer, whether it's 200 feet or 500 feet. So I'm only raising these things to sort of put on a list the variety of things that have come to us through the public hearings so far. I'm not seeing anybody on at the moment. Oh, Councilors Jardine, welcome.
Thank you, good to be with you.
To add to that, so at this moment, we're still waiting for the recommendation from planning. So I think my recommendation at this point would be that we would continue this public hearing to the 22nd. And then, by then, we should have their recommendation, and then we can have our discussion and decide what we want to recommend to the council. Does that sound reasonable?
Yes.
All right, so if somebody would like to make a motion to continue to March 22nd?
Motion to continue to March 22nd for the public hearing.
Okay, is there a second?
Second, Bill.
All in favor? Aye. All right. So now we're down to items 3 and 4, and we are waiting for the planning board. Jeffrey, perhaps it might help the planning board to understand that we've continued the public hearing of the buffer to March 22nd?
Sending a message right now.
Thank you. I just want it noted, this meeting is not going on longer because of how long the agenda is at this point. But I commend everybody for asking all the questions, but getting them answered, but moving it along as well, so. Well, there's truth to that. I'm hoping they have the language they want for number 3.
Yeah.
Because I have no idea what they want, so.
All right, I've been given a two-minute warning. Okay, they are beginning to join.
Thank you. I think we'll... I think we've left to do the hearings one at a time, though, because they're not related.
So I'm gonna get some speed humps on the black market and distribute them throughout our neighborhoods. Like, where did those come from? They appear on the streets in the middle of the night.
Good Samaritan.
With one of those little triangle or cones a little ways up. How did it happen? Super councilors. Mitchell Landt, all sorts of stuff. How did it happen? No idea.
Oh, I see... Mimi Panda. What about my car?
I think my mother is watching.
They're all wondering, what are they doing, sitting around?
Just hanging out.
Jeffrey, are we just waiting on the chair?
There, so there's one labeled conference room and one labeled City of Holyoke. I'm not sure if either one of those might be the chair.
Oh.
We're in the, he's in the conference room, and I guess they're switching over now.
Okay.
There is a squared labeled conference room right now, so maybe that's Chair Kelly.
Okay. Jeffrey, can you hear me?
It is.
The conference room is labeled "The Conference Room", where Mr. Kelly is sitting, and I'm having some technical difficulties with the camera, so if you could just bear with me.
Well, you can, you can hear us, so am I correct? This is John Kelly?
Yes, we can hear you, Mr. Kelly.
Okay, then you know something? Maybe your lucky night, you don't have to see me, just listen to me.
All right, we can work with that.
We've got audio, and I know we've got some video of some of the members of the board, so I think we might as well proceed, because we may not be getting the video back tonight.
Okay, all right, good enough, then. I'd like to call to order the, and accept a motion to open up the joint public hearing with the planning board for item 3, which is the public hearing to amend the Holyoke zoning ordinances to correct the site plan review process in section 7-10-6-5.5B for the marijuana ordinance.
I don't care. Can I say something?
Your motion to open?
Well, can I say something before that?
After it's open.
Okay. Motion to open.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. So our public hearing is open.
I just wanted to say happy International Women's Day.
Oh, thank you.
I see a lot of women on the screen. A couple women here.
Public hearing, the Holyoke Planning Board?
So moved.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so moved. Thank you. Madam Chair, at this point, from a planning board perspective, I know that, I remember Mimi's done a lot of work on this relative to the recommendation, I know how you want to proceed. If, maybe, Mimi, could you maybe lead us through some of the things you've recommended? Or I think... could you share them up or not? I don't know.
That's fine with me, we're really just waiting for the language that the planning staff and the planning board needs in the ordinance.
Okay. Would it be helpful if we shared what we have with you so far? Or would you rather just...
I think that perhaps some introduction is worthwhile while we pull it up. This is, as you all know, a huge mess, and part of the mess is that there are now multiple versions of the ordinance running around. So I have at least three of them. Which one is the latest? At this point, I'm not even sure. But I think we all agree that what we want to do is make the permitting process as clear as possible for both the ordinance committee and the city council, and for the applicants who have to deal with it. And to that end, it seems, or has seemed to the planning board, that the best thing to do, because attempting to address all of the potential problems by or via a hybrid process between the ordinance committee and the planning board just makes everything more confusing, is to take out all of the language in whatever the current operative ordinance is that relates to a joint process, or to planning board site plan for a marijuana use, and concentrate all of the permitting in the ordinance committee and city council. And the way to do that while still protecting the city and addressing all of the operational problems that have surfaced during the time we've been dealing with these, may be to formalize a special permit process and final special permit form that looks more like the kinds of forms that other boards of the cities, including the planning board, do when we issue special permits. So what I did in terms of language for you to look at is to do a nonspecific version of what we think that such a special permit should probably look like. And it incorporates the requirements of section nine point three of our zoning ordinance, which refer to any special permit that is granted by either the city council or the planning board. It requires a certain number of written findings, and it's incorporated by reference in our current marijuana ordinance, all versions of it. And there are a bunch of findings that also specifically have to be made under the marijuana ordinance in all of its various iterations. So Sharon, if you bring that up on your screen.
Jeffrey, can you give me permission to share my screen, please?
Jumping on it now, one second.
So Chair Kelly, if I can just clarify something under this public hearing? So, under this public hearing, really what we're doing is we're cleaning up the language that currently calls for a major site plan review that was put into the ordinance, apparently in error, because the discussion was that there would be a review by planning staff and the board, but that it would not rise to the level of a major site plan review. So I believe we do have to stay within that portion of the ordinance in terms of whatever we're doing, we're just trying to clean that process part of it up. So I just wanted to make sure I was following Ms. Panitch accurately, and that we're in that section of the ordinance.
Yes, we are in that section of the ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
And again, I guess the intent is if we kind of go through this quickly, it may help to stir comments and questions by, you know, members of the ordinance committee and the public, that's all kind of, you know...
Exactly. And to put this as briefly as I can, just as an introduction, the thought is to take out all of the references to site plan review by the planning board that currently exist in the provision of the ordinance that the order covers, because it is confusing. To retain the parts of the language that call for both the planning board and for other boards and authorities in the city to provide the city council with guidance about what concerns they see with a given application. And then, you know, because questions about enforceability and process were at the root of the original order that triggered the language about special permit, or, I'm sorry, planning board site plan review, to offer the city council a format for when you issue a city or a special permit, putting in all of the information that you have received from the various boards and commissions and authorities that have helped you review this as conditions so that it can all be enforced as time goes on and applicants are checking back in with you as they cross the items that you, you know, your conditions off their to-do list. And I thought that would be helpful, because if we just strike all of the language from the current ordinance, and we don't... Confusing language to begin with, we're back to that problem where, you know, you have asked applicants to do something, and then there's no way to follow them up and/or to make sure that certain things get addressed. And that was the idea behind putting together a format for a decision on these that would incorporate those conditions and give you a feed from all of the other people examining this. And I thought that it would be useful for you to look at what that might look like before we started taking everything out. But if it's not going to be helpful, then I'm certainly happy to just go and get rid of things like the highlighted marijuana site plan review language that you just saw on your screen.
Through your chair, I think it's fine for this to be submitted in the public hearing to the committee and your board, and we can all look at it for consideration as we're moving forward in the public hearing.
Thank you. So, again, this is very bare bones, and, you know, what it does is, part one of it, Sharon, if you could scroll down?
Yep.
I should have taken the waivers out, the waivers are irrelevant. But findings here. This is just really a checklist. It is, you know, written, you have found that the marijuana establishment complies with all of the provisions of the ordinances, and, you know, the ordinance we have requires that this finding be made, and I know you all are making it, it just doesn't get written into the final special permit. And the same is true of the other nine conditions here. They are all required by various parts of the ordinance that we have, and I've identified which sections those are in the brackets there. And, you know, this is work I'm sure you all are doing already. It just is designed to memorialize that work when it comes to a final vote by the council.
So can I ask a question? Are these items one through 10 in the purview of your site plan review that you're then going to be making a recommendation to us based on? Is that what this is that we're seeing?
On some of them. And obviously, to the extent that you found it helpful, I'm sure we'd be glad to consider, you know, other matters, but things like the fiscal impact. You know, every city can, or every special permit that any permit-granting authority in the city issues, you're supposed to, we're supposed to be thinking about the fiscal impact, you know, some of the time that's just, it doesn't matter, because it's something like fence height. But, you know, this is something that is really important to the city, and one of the reasons I'm sure that the city council wants control of these. And I would imagine that it would be you all on the ordinance committee who would be making the principal assessment of what the impact on the city's fiscal base would be.
I understand what you're saying, I am just trying to keep the focus of our public hearing for ordinance to the site plan review process in the section that we've noted in the ordinance. This feels like it's something different, but it looks like most of the items one through 10 are related to site plan review of one sort.
Yeah, they are things that normally would be covered by our recommendation letters to you now.
Okay.
Yeah, and many of them are part of what we do look at in site plan review.
Okay.
But the reason for the ones that aren't specifically site plan review is that they're all things that are required by the marijuana ordinance or by our ordinance in general, and I didn't want to just leave any of them out.
Understood, thank you.
And, you know, the next section is decision, and here, you know, I've just written out the thinking about it, which is that this is an easy way to make sure that there are some, you know, not only that you have memorialized all of the conditions that you want, including some conditions that the planning board would normally do under site plan review, but that there's some level of enforcement that isn't having to issue fines or having to ask a project that's already up and running to suspend its operations because something hasn't been done. And it just, you know, I've, these are very broad examples as opposed to actual suggestions. But they include, you know, prior to the issuance of any permit issued by the building department, you know, questions that have been raised in a planning department letter, in a fire department letter, you know, from the stormwater authority, from any city councillor should be addressed. And this is just, you know, a way of making sure not only that you've got a handy list of all of the conditions, including, you know, I didn't add any of Councillor Bartley's standard conditions about marijuana establishments, for example, but these are just things that I thought you all might want to consider as you think about how you're permitting things and what you think should be covered.
So, all right, I think what we can do is receive this document in as part of the public hearing so that we can each look it over. I think we're not going to... So if you would submit it to Jeffrey so that he can circulate it to us, I see that Councillor Jordan has his hand up. I would note, as a practical matter, that our public hearing has to be limited to the topic for which we have advertised it. We cannot start revising our ordinance in areas that we did not advertise, just as a note of order.
Yes.
Thank you.
I do realize, with all respect, I think all of this is related to site plan review, all of it is stuff that we would do under site plan review.
Okay, and we would look forward to that recommendation coming from the planning board to our committee. That's great, thank you. Councillor Jordan? You're muted, maybe? I saw his hand.
Can you hear me now?
A little low.
Yes.
All right, I just wanted you once, and I got logged out, so I don't know what happened there, I got kicked out, and I wanted to just let you know I was here. No, nothing further than that, and I guess now I'm a panelist.
Thank you. That was easy. All right, I'm not seeing any other... Oh, Councillor Murphy Ramboletti.
Thank you, and I just want to thank the planning board for their thoughts, and I'm looking forward to looking through Ms. Panitch's suggestions. I guess I just, as the maker of the order, I felt kind of compelled to just put my opinion out there. I mean, I think it's great that the planning board has kind of shown us the process of everything that's involved in site plan review, and I may very much be in the minority on this opinion, I just feel like that process is there for a reason, and I tend to think that the council is not meant to do exactly what the planning board process should do. So I'm glad we're having this conversation, and, you know, yeah, I'm looking forward to reviewing this information.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Not seeing any. I'm inclined to entertain a motion to continue the public hearing, so we have a chance to review the information, unless there's something else planning staff or the board wishes us to be aware of in the public hearing, and I just want to also ask again if there's anybody in the public who wishes to comment on this matter at this time? Not seeing or hearing anything.
Motion to continue the public hearing to March 22nd.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So our public hearing is continued to March 22nd at 6:30.
Let's ask, what is the wish of the planning board?
And Chair Kelly, if I can just check in with you, is 6:30 a reasonable time? I think we're all open to coordinating and everything, but if seven or 7:30 is a more reasonable time?
Yeah, I appreciate that, because we certainly realize we had a 6:30 commitment in action. We started at 5:30, the two public hearings, we have these hearings, and then we have to go back to a full agenda for planning board, so it's really, as we all know, it's hard to put a timeframe on the public hearings. Maybe we could try seven o'clock?
Okay.
And I think one of the things that I'm thinking of too, Councillor, is that, you know, maybe in our public hearings, just so the people know, we have a certain amount of time, we just have to cut them off and continue, but we, you know, we try to accommodate to get the hearings, like, say, we were able to close two of them, but it took, you know, it took a little longer.
Understood.
But we appreciate your understanding of that, too.
Mr. Kelly, can I just remind you that we will not be able to start hearing, that public hearing, until seven, even if planning has finished their business by six o'clock or 6:30. You can always start it later, you just can't start it earlier.
Okay. I'm looking at our agenda for the 22nd, and it's really not that heavy, it does look like we would probably, we could probably stick to 6:30, just looking to get what we have on the agenda for that particular night. But I think, Councillor, making to your point, that could vary, because we kind of know ahead of time what's coming up, so if we have a very full agenda, we may push it back to seven o'clock, but I think for this purpose is we go to the 22nd at 6:30.
Okay, we're at 6:30 according to our motion right now, so, okay.
Great.
Thank you.
So could I intitate a motion from the planning board to continue the public hearing to March 22nd, 2022, at 6:30 PM?
So moved.
Second the motion? Did I get a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we'll continue, thank you.
Okay, so I'd like to entertain a motion to open the public hearing for item four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So this public hearing was filed by Councillor Lisi to review and amend section 6.4 of the zoning ordinance to be in compliance with consent judgment and permanent injunction ordered by Honorable Mark G. Mastriani dated April 12th, 2019, and any other updates to streamline the ordinance. Now, so, I'll wait for planning to open.
Can we open up? Intend a motion to reopen the public hearing, or the planning board to take up a zone text change section 6.4 signs for compliance for April 12th, 2019 judgment.
So moved. Okay, second.
Okay, I got a second, all in favor? Okay, got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So just by review, we've had this before us for quite a while. It's carried over from last year. We have not really done any work with this and my goal is to try to simplify our approach to it by asking either Attorney Dagnan or Attorney Bissonette to inform us as to what areas of the ordinance we specifically need to correct. And then beyond that, if there are other things that we choose to do, that would be fine. And if there are other things that the planning board wants to recommend to us to do, we'd be happy to entertain them. But at this point, I just think we need to keep it simple and updated so that we're in compliance with the law. And I don't know if at this point either attorney has anything to offer in the public hearing to us or if there's been any time to look at that yet. Attorney Dagnan?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. October 28th, I submitted to the council an ordinance which addressed the very specific piece that you're talking about dealing with section 6.4. Because basically, there was a case in federal court and Judge Mastriani ordered that the city fix or correct section 4.6.3 paragraph 7 in talking about temporary signs. And you said you don't have that form in front of you.
I don't, but I totally believe it's in the records, but we just, if you could send it to Jeffrey again so the new committee could have it, we're in the situation of the crossed years and I think I'm the only one left.
Yes, I can certainly do that. And all it's doing is it's taking the paragraphs that talk about temporary signs not being placed or fixed to vehicles. And no temporary signs are in any district from December 1st and March 1st of each year. So I won't go through and read the whole thing. It's a short ordinance, but I will resend it to Jeffrey. And you are correct, this is just one piece of the zoning ordinance with respect to signage. I have been in discussion with Jeff Burkott. There will be other changes to the sign ordinance. I'm working on it. I'm not in a position to discuss them right now, but I just wanted to let you know that, that that's also going on. So we just have this amendment, which I did to fix the court, you know, to comply with the court order. And then there'll probably be more orders dealing with other parts of the, of the city sign, the sign ordinance.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I don't see any hands, do you? I'm not seeing any hands on my side.
Councillor Vagan, I had one quick question.
Oh, Councillor Jordaine?
Yeah, so just so I make sure I understood what just happened, you're going to get all the committee members, particularly the four of us, copies of the judge's decision and the rationale behind it?
Yes, and the October 28th submission from Attorney Dagnan that she gave to the council last year.
Excellent, thank you.
Is there any member of the public that wishes to speak relative to the sign ordinance? Not seeing any. Chair Kelly, anything from your side?
You know, not really. I mean, I think the more I, you know, think about this, from a planning perspective, you know, we kind of like recommend to the councils regulations concerning, you know, size, permanent versus temporary, you know, where they, where they can go, et cetera, relative to language or legal language. And I don't really see where that's the purview of the planning board. That's more the law department making recommendations and, you know, the council obviously being the legislative body of the city. But when I kind of think back of my tenure on the planning board, our involvement with signs has more to do with, you know, either someone wants an exemption from what the zone might require, you know, some discretion there. But it's really more like, it's more really around the size of the sign and, you know, than it is about what is on the sign.
Right, I totally agree. But we needed to go through this process to correct it from the legal perspective. So
Right.
I'm just trying to keep it simple and get it done.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
We're here with you.
All right, well then I guess, seeing nothing, I would entertain a motion. What do we think is reasonable on this to continue it? What do you want? Do you want to the end of April? Then would we be actually ready to have something in front of us that we could actually vote on?
I think that probably makes more sense than anything too soon.
Okay.
Give people time to, yeah.
All right, so hang on, I'm looking at my calendar. So how about if we go, I would entertain a motion to continue this public hearing to April 26th and we'll be brave and go for 6:30? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So this public hearing is continued till April 26th at 6:30.
I have to defer to my boss, Sharon, for a moment. Sharon?
April 26th at 6:30 is fine. And Kathy, if you could make sure that we get those documents as well, that'd be great.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, I got permission for 26th, so entertain a motion to continue the public hearing of the planning board till April 26th at 6:30 PM.
So moved.
Is there a second on the motion?
Yep, Mimi.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, we'll continue then, thank you.
Thank you all very much. Thank you, committee.
Good evening. Planning board, you have to come back.
Yeah, don't go away, planning board, we got a meeting.
For our committee, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
It was a good evening.
Good evening.